The light isn't on. You can hear me now. Okay, good morning Birmingham. Today is August 9, 2022. The time is now 9:34. And I call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We will have our invocation led by Councilor Moore and pledge of allegiance by Councilor Tate. Please join us then if you can. Thank you.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Father God, we just come before you today just thanking you for this amazing opportunity to live this life, God. We just thank you. We just want to say thank you first of all for our young people starting school on yesterday, God. We pray that you will continue to wrap your arms around them, place a hedge of protection around them, keep them safe, Father God, from all hurt, harm, and danger, Father God. We just thank you that this year will be unlike any other year that they've ever had in school. We thank you, Father God, that our teachers, we have excellent teachers in this city, who move with the spirit of excellence, and they educate our kids at the top notch, Father God. We thank you that our young people go to school to learn and to make good connections with each other, Father God, and that we don't have to worry about any type of danger. But we thank, we're thankful, Father God, that they excel and they progress regardless of what obstacles have been placed before them, Father God. We send a special prayer for our third graders, Father God, praying that they will really grasp hold of the literacy and really learn in that area, Father God, so that reading is not an issue for them, that they understand and they comprehend and they excel in it. We pray for each one of our neighborhood officers and each one of our residents in this city, Father God. I thank you that I live in a city where residents connect with one another, where they add value by finding ways to partner with our public officials. They find ways to engage us and communicate in such a way that's productive on both ends. And I thank you, Father God, that we as public officials do the same thing, Father God, that we serve as partners, that we really truly serve our residents, God, and we work together to make our city better. I just thank you that this is a prosperous city. I thank you that this is a prosperous city. I just got to keep saying that, Father God, because you said that, you know, if we pray that the officials and the government, the people in authority prosper, that our city will prosper. So I just thank you for each and every one of these people up here, including myself, that we make wise decisions, that we advocate for our people properly, God, and we make you proud. We make you proud. And so, we just thank you for this day. We thank you again that the second day of school is amazing for our young people, and we just bless your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you very much, and we thank Councilor Moore for that very thoughtful prayer. Thank you so much. At this time, Mr. Clerk will entertain a roll call.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Council Pro Tem Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Alexander.
Present, good morning. At this time, councilors, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings of March 8th, March 22nd, and March 29th, 2022.
I love approval.
All right, Councilmember Abbott, Councilmember Tate. Cross your fingers. Voting should be over. Can you get in, Councilmember Moore? I think the screen. All right, wow, all right.
All right, we're back in business. Thank you very much. Those minutes for those previous meetings are approved. At this time, minutes are not ready for April 5th through August 2nd, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, good morning to you. Good morning to your colleagues. Good morning to the public. It's good to see everybody this morning. A few notes, Madam President and Council. I want to pick up where Councilor JT Moore, who not only represents District 4, but is also chairman of the Education Committee left off. School started yesterday. We want to send a sincere, all of our positive vibes to all of our educators, parents, and children as school starts. We want to welcome our children back to school as well. As we, we've awaited the initial enrollment, I want to remind parents that our children are only in school 180 days. Yesterday was day one, so it's 179 left. It's important that children actually are in school every day. So, please go to bhamsidyschools.org/register and/or please actually go to the school and register your child. It's important that our children are in school every day. I do want to remind the public that this council was gracious enough to support via wraparound services, things that we're doing to support our children. They include the apprenticeship program through the Birmingham Promise, which will launch the application process this semester for juniors and seniors related to workforce development that partnership with Birmingham City Schools. Also, I want to thank this council for its commitment of $2 million each year to the Birmingham Promise for those apprenticeships as well as college tuition. This year marks the second year the city will invest $1 million in partnership with Birmingham City Schools to make mental health care available to more students. I think that's a mental health provider at each school, all 43 schools. In addition to that, very excited to partner with Park and Rec as they continue to launch the Safe Havings Initiative, which provides extended hours at select rec centers throughout October. In addition to that, Park After Dark begins Thursday at Patton Park with the family movie night. The event begins at 6:00 p.m. As well as, under the leadership of Gavin Billups of the Birmingham Division of Youth Services, continuing to engage the Birmingham City School System as well as community partners around reading literacy through page piles that will resume this fall. And the next few weeks, we look forward to announcing details for the financial literacy curriculum for our children. But truly, under the direction of Dr. Mark Sullivan and the Birmingham Board of Education and all the administrators, let's continue to do everything we can to support our children. Madam President and Council, there's another note about trash pickup update. Department of Public Works continues to work to address the bulk trash and brush pickup needs. And the city is not immune to the staff shortages affecting both public and private waste management services nationwide. DPW for the public, if you don't know, across our entire city, made up of nine city council districts and 99 neighborhoods, has a total of 28 routes for bulk trash pickup. Again, that's 28 routes. There are 28 trucks available to run those routes. Currently, DPW has only 21 drivers. So I just wanted to make that public, that we are short seven drivers for 28 routes. We only have 21 drivers. Last week, two additional drivers were hired, but more needed. So, to you, the public, to the council, and to everybody that's listening under the sound of my voice, I encourage those interested, or I want you all to encourage those who may be interested, to go to the Personnel Board's website. That's pbjcal.org. Again, that's pbjcal.org/jobs with an S, request. PB, pbjcal.org/jobsrequest. The whole idea is simple. Our citizens have an expectation that we pick up bulk trash on time, but at the same time, we're short truck drivers. We need more drivers in order to be in a position to actually do those routes on time. When you're short seven drivers, that's why we get behind. So, I wanted to make that public. Please partner with me in spreading that information out in your individual districts, the churches, and everybody, everywhere else in the community, neighborhood meetings, et cetera, not just an issue, but solution, let's hire more drivers. At this time, what I want to do, Madam President, I'm going to actually stand up and go to the mic, but as I come up, I would like to invite Ms. Sandy Green and anyone with her to the actual podium. Madam President and Council, if you look at these lovely lady shirts, it says it all. Don't stare, just acts. September is Alopecia Awareness Month, and this year's national theme is Alopecia All-Stars. This morning, we have Ms. Green, and she will introduce everybody else with her. Ms. Green works on behalf of those affected by alopecia, and in addition, she helps those who support people living with this disease, which causes hair loss in men as well as women. I'm wearing blue today in honor of alopecia awareness, and I also have a proclamation that I want to present to Ms. Green that declares September Awareness Month in the city of Birmingham. And it reads in portion, "Whereas Birmingham native Sandy Green knows firsthand how this disease affects not one person that she's had in more than 15 years." She says that her journey has been a hard one, and that she maintains that God has continued to bless her. She recently started the group "Don't Stare, Just Acts" to help remove stigmas and misinformation associated with this condition. And whereas on September 17, 2022, Ms. Green and her organization will host a walk to help increase awareness about this disease and to provide an outlet and support for those who have this disease and for those seeking more information about it. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do declare September 22 Awareness Month in the Magic City and encourage all residents to rise to the occasion and salute the impact that Sandy Green is making on the community as she works to support those who have this condition. And now I would like Ms. Green to come up and give some remarks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I'm Sandy Green, and I just, God gave me this journey in May at a broken part of my life, when I had to shave my hair because I really had nothing left but like stubbles. And I obeyed God, and I shaved my head, and I started this organization and came into some beautiful people when I thought it was just me. It was a lot of people going through alopecia. And I want to thank you. I want to thank you guys for listening to us, you know. It's been hard. It hasn't been an easy trial, but with God, it's been worth it. I can now say what I was scared of, that I'm glad God chose me to represent alopecia, and I'm going to represent it well. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
One last note, Madam President. When I speak about the schools, I don't, I tend to try to channel the leadership of the school system. Only 71% of children attended school yesterday. That number is unacceptable.
What was the percentage, Mayor?
Seventy-one. So, just a reminder to parents and families in the city of Birmingham and our community, learning is every day. We all acknowledge that there's a significant achievement gap that we need to work on. I will give you a simple solution. Parents, just making sure children actually attend school every day, it's a simple way to close that gap. So, I just wanted to reiterate that point, that please go to bhamsidyschools.org/register if you are a parent, because every day is critical, and every day is learning, and we want our children in school. So I just wanted to say that publicly again. Madam President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. I do want to thank you for reiterating how important education is and how important it is for our children to go to school. I do want to thank, we'll be talking about this later today, but I do want to thank the councilors, a majority of you were at first day of school, or either you had different events over the weekend or for the past week, to help support our parents and our children as well as our faculty and staff. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that to our attention and reiterating that for the public. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask, without objection, that I'd like to suspend the rules and allow a presentation at this time, if that's okay? And I'll ask Mr. Mosley and Ms. Allen and King to join me at the podium. Thank you.
Good morning to, again, to the council and to the mayor. At this time, I would like to make a presentation on behalf of community health centers. America's health centers are very important to us. We know the disparity of health care as it exists in our community, and we often know that many residents will use the emergency room for primary health care. And so, we are very indebted to our community health centers that operate within our communities to, again, to increase the opportunity for our residents to have adequate health care, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurse midwives. I have joining me today Mr. Christopher Mosley and Ms. Nanette Allen and Ms. Amber King. And we, I would like to offer a resolution in support of the community health centers that operate in our area and on today. So, if I would like to ask for unanimous consent for this resolution to honor them today.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. And this time, the item, the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Thank you very much. I'll let Mr. Mosley, if you'll introduce everyone with you, and you can just...
Good morning. I'm Chris Mosley. I think I know everyone up there. So, I am here in my professional capacity. I am the Outreach Director for Alabama Regional Medical Services. We are one of the four federally qualified health centers in this area. In addition to Alabama Regional Medical Services, you have Cahaba Medical Services, Alithia House, and also Christ Health Center. So I think that you, as members of the council, are very aware of these organizations. We do health care for persons with or without insurance, and we are celebrating National Health Centers Week this entire week. With me today, I have Mrs. Nanette Allen, who is the CEO of our company, as well as Ms. Allen, Amber King, who is our Chief Operations Officer. So, I think, as I say, I'm familiar with each of you. I have probably done events either in your area or in partnership with you. I know I was with JT Moore at a church a couple of months back. I was with Council President Pro Tem, Crystal Smithman, with Brenda Brown, Bosom's Buddies a couple of weeks ago at Memorial Park. So, thank you, Ms. Council President Alexander for having me. And Ms. Allen, if you could make comments at this time.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having us here. Kind of wanted to expound on the mayor's comments about the school system as well. In addition to the community health centers that we have, we also will be expanding into seven of the Birmingham City Schools this year, providing mental health care services and primary health care services as well. So, it is our intent to remain embedded in the schools to provide as much care to the kids in the community as we can. So I wanted to thank you guys for having us out today, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Again, we want to honor and recognize them for their work and for Community Health Center Week. At this time, Madam Pro Tem, I'll turn the gavel over to you, and if you'll entertain the consent agenda. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Clark? Can we go over the consent agenda?
All right, consent agenda for today starts on page two. We have items one and two on consent. Page three, we have items three, four, and five on consent. I have a correction on item number four. We're going to change the money amount at the end from $1,826,475. That change will be $2,226,475. It's $2,226,475. On page four, we have items six, seven, and eight on consent. I have some corrections to item number six. Well, actually, all of the items on this page. Item number six, we're going to start off with the code section, 11-47-16. On the first line, it should be 11-47-19. And then, the $5,000 for the Sidewalk Film Festival and Seminole Incorporated should be $10,000. And at the end, both of the discretionary funds should be $5,000 for each one, for five and two. That's $5,000 for each, for the total of the $10,000. Then on item number seven, we're going to change the amount from, at the end, from $1,826,475 to $900,000. That's on item number seven. We're going to change that to $900,000, page eight, not page, item number eight. We want to change to $65,000 to $75,000. So that $65,000 will change to $75,000. Then on page five, we have the consent agenda picked back up with items nine, 10, and 11. And on item number 10, it should be recommended denial instead of recommended by the Public Improvement Committee, should be recommended denial. So item 10. Page six, we have items 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Then on page seven, we have item number 19 on consent, and that should be right about it.
All right, thank you. At this time, councilors, are there any items that you'd like to add or remove from consent? Yes, sir, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. On item number 10, so the recommendation is to deny the permit?
That's what he, yes, sir.
So, I guess we would need to take that off consent? Or am I confused on that?
Yeah, you would amend it. You would. We would remove it. If it's recommended denial, but unless the council altogether just agreeing to...
Let's take 10 off consent.
Okay, we'll pull 10 off consent. Any other items, councilors? Councilor Quinn?
Yes, I have a question about item 11, so if we could take that one off consent.
Okay, thank you. So that's item 10 and 11. Any other items, councilors? All right, at this time, all items considered as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion?
So move?
All righty, Council Pro Tem Smithman, Councilmember Williams. I'm sorry, give me one second. Can I, if I don't understand what's going on, but can I get someone else to second? Because I can't get Councilwoman Williams' name to pop up. I'm sorry, I don't understand what's going on.
Techno...
Well, maybe he needs to be present. Okay, how would you like to vote, Councilmember Williams? We'll start voting. I'll get you in. Yes, thank you. I think it's user error this time. Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Moore. All right? Oh, Councilmember Moore? All right, thank you. That vote should be...
All right, thank you. The consent agenda passes. If you were here for any items that were listed as consent, those have been approved, and we hope you have a great day. First item, Mr. Clerk.
We're going to item 10. A resolution authorizing director planning, engineering, and permits to issue a condemnation repair permit to Sharita Smith, the owner or agent of the property located at 3901 Willard Avenue, Birmingham, which was condemned by the council May the 10th, 2022, in order to remove the weeds and the trash from the premises within 10 days of permit issuance, and to commence and make substantial repairs within 30 days of permit issuance. No previous permits have been requested. Motion, please.
So move? Second.
All right, item before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. Is this the one you pulled? Any question or discussion? I think it was just procedural that we have to do this as part of the request. Is that correct? All right. Name the discussion. Dr. Quinn?
Does the item come through the PIC committee?
Yeah, it did. It was denied by PIC just because there wasn't a foundation to the house, and it almost would be, I wouldn't say impossible, but it would be very hard to repair a house like that. And so, I didn't think it was fair to the neighborhood in that particular district to have a house like that just sitting instead of just condemning it.
And did the, Ms. Smith attend the meeting?
She did not.
Okay, all right. Get her now.
Any other questions? Council Clark?
I just have a secret question. If it was, if it didn't pass the committee, should it have appeared on the agenda?
Because we have the final, we have the final...
Okay, so it's advisory to this body.
Committees, all committees are advisory.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote. Are we going yes or no? Yes.
No?
Yes.
Okay, the item that's before you is to authorize the permit. So if you vote no, it fails, then it fails. But if you vote yes, then of course you authorized the permit.
All right, thank you for clearing that up for us. Just a little parliamentary procedure today. Thank you so much. All right, that motion fails. But see, I still think it doesn't...
Well, the motion is always positive.
Okay.
To pass the permit.
Okay.
So if you vote against it and vote no, then of course the permit didn't pass.
Can not pass. All right. Are we clear, councilors? Are we...
That was our error, I guess, on our side, when we changed the recommendation because we got that late, so.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you both. Right, next item.
All right, item 11. A resolution is supplementing and approving the bid of train, U.S. Incorporated, doing business as train, Birmingham, for HVAC products and related services. As needed, the unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period not to exceed March 31st, 2023, contingent upon council approval for the city of Birmingham Public Works Department per the Omni Partners Purchasing Corp. Contract 15JLP23. Motion, please.
So move? All right, thank you. This item is before us. Dr. Quinn?
Yes, so there wasn't any additional information or packet about this, but just knowing the history of the city's relationship with this particular company, and it's been, it hasn't given anybody any warm fuzzies, I don't think. So, I'm just, you know, concerned that we kind of, you know, have we positioned ourselves in this particular instance to avoid some of the issues that we've had in the past?
Madam President?
Yes, G.
Just to talk about the item that's before the council, this is just simply allowing us to buy parts for the train products that we have in our different facilities. To your second point, I would have to yield to the city attorney's office if you want to go into executive session.
I'll note this too, Madam President, that in terms of the day-to-day operations piece, what Chief Mitchell noted is absolutely correct. To your question, Councilor Quinn, we move in sync with the office of the city attorney because of the sensitivities around this particular vendor. So, to this point, if there's questions beyond that, then it would be executive session. But from an administration standpoint, we recognize the sensitivity. We're walking with them on that.
Okay, but in this particular instance, this, we're just trying to fix the AC and need some parts.
Right. So, yeah, using a cooperative allows us to just go ahead and get the parts pretty steadfast and fast, so we can go ahead and repair certain things that break down.
Right, got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this, madam? Miss, uh, Madam Chair, um, Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you. I wanted to ask if someone could explain who Omnia is.
Madam President?
Yes, my chief.
Omni Partners is a cooperative that we use for certain type of parts and labor. It basically helps us go past the Alabama State Bid Law because these items have already been bided out. So it just helps us procure things much faster. We use different types of cooperatives around the city for, like, tires and certain type of parts that equipment management needs. So it just helps us expedite the process.
Is Omnia a governmental agency? Or so it's a group of governments that band together?
Yes, it's a cooperative that has been approved by the Alabama State Bid Law.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Any other questions? Any questions? We're ready for the vote.
All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item eleven passes. Next item?
Should be item seventeen, a resolution affirming the appointment of seven members to the Art Museum of the City of Birmingham. One member to fill the unexpired term of Kelly. I'm going to butcher this, Stathelene Juca resigned said term expiring August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. And six members said terms begin September the first, two thousand and twenty-two, and expire October the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. And I think the names should be in your packet, also on your iPad as well. Click the Jim clip.
I'm going to turn this over to Councilor Clark, just to give us an explanation here if you want to list those. Council Clark, as chair of, um.
I'm not really prepared to do this, but I will do that. Let's see, that's. That list in front of me.
And it's in your packet.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
So the resolution does appoint, does recommend appointing seven members to the Art Museum Board of the City of Birmingham. The appointees will be Marilyn Halsey Dixon, Grace Goodrich, Eric P. Jack, Edgar Marx, Joyce Crawford Mitchell, and Patricia Wallwork. Grace Goodrich is replacing Braxton Goodrich, and that term would be expiring on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. And Edgar Marx will be replacing Mayhead Fry. That term would also be expiring April thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Dr. Eric P. Jack would be replacing Ruffin Page, and that term would also be expiring August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight. And those are the three new appointees. There are several reappointments. Joyce Crawford Mitchell would be reappointed to a term expiring August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Marilyn Halsey Dixon would be replacing or filling the unexpired term of Kelly Skyslander, also expiring August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, no, that's expiring August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six, as opposed to two thousand and twenty. Also reappointed will be Patricia Wallwork and Tindall Richardson. Both, those appointments expire August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, any questions or discussion? At this time, we're ready for the vote. Thank you so much, Council Clark.
I heard a call, second, maybe a second.
Go with J two.
Okay, that'll work. Voting should be up. All right, the vote should be up.
Thank you very much. That item passes. We thank Ms. Clark and her committee, as well as the museum board for making these selections. And we look forward to the service of these appointees. Thank you. Next item?
Item eighteen, a resolution setting a public hearing September the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-two dash four, to change zone district boundaries from R three, single-family district, to Q M U H, qualified mixed-use high district to allow for a community arts and cultural center filed by the owner, Daryl Jones, of the opportunity to center LLC for property located sixteen-hundred and fourth Court West, situated in southwest corridor, section thirty-three, township seventeen, range three west.
I move approval.
All right, councilors, this is just setting a public hearing on September sixth for this particular ordinance. Any questions? Not, we're ready for the vote.
All right. Councilmember Clark, thank you. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you, councilors. We set that public hearing for September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any other items, Mr. Clerk?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. As I said earlier, before we go into our comments, I do want to thank the councilors and the mayor for, and even the city of Birmingham, we had staff out. They were all, I wanted to be sure that first day of school was a successful one. So I want to thank everyone for reaching out and doing what we can do. Of course, hearing today, not only seventy-one percent of our students were there to greet us yesterday. We do want to ask and encourage those families to please get our children in school because like you said, it's only a hundred and eighty days. And so let's just, you know, get our children in there. I do believe we have a video that has been prepared to just sort of chronicle what has been done for the past few days to get us ready for school. Do we have that ready in the back? If we don't have that ready, we go ahead, let's go ahead and just get started with our comments, and we'll do it at the end. Is it ready? Okay. Thanks. We are just hoping for and praying for a great, productive, safe school year for our families. We know how important our administrators, our faculty and staff are to G seven and to our students. So we look forward to a great school year. And again, I can't thank you enough for what you do for District Seven.
No, you're so kind.
Thank you.
Today, we came together to celebrate the leadership in our schools in District Seven. We wanted to thank them for going above and beyond in the education of our children. We also wanted to welcome them back to school, start the school year.
So we are in District Six, obviously, the West End Library. I'm here with my dad, Senator Roger Smithman, and then Urban Lee, shout out to William Barnes. We were doing a back-to-school supplies and bookbag giveaway.
When I saw the date, I hope I see during the school year, and that were parents bringing children here instead of sending children, they were with their children. And I hope that each parent would just put in all the time they can.
I just want to tell all the teachers, all the students, to go out there, all the parents, you know, do everything, let's really wrap our hands around the learning process. Let's make sure it's happening in the schools, but also at home. Teachers really step up and lead the way. These children, they really want to learn, they can do it. I know they can, and so let's continue to pour into them. And just, you got the support of the whole community.
Really excited we're having our back-to-school bash. Hot dogs, candy, food, school supplies, concert. Just really excited about serving our community and grateful for the partnership that we have. Councilman Wood, our city comes together, our church comes together, our community comes together. It's a great time.
Every day is a new day. You know, if you have a rough day, you know, you can put it behind you, start the next day fresh. Anything that happens in the past doesn't have the influence of future. So just wake up, you know, every day with that spirit that, you know, you're going to go out and you're going to accomplish great things and make the most of it each day. And you don't have to let, you know, anything, things happen, you know, to all of us, but we don't have to let that determine our future.
Had an opportunity to come out to Norwood Elementary School. The community has really adopted the school and really just taken the lead on making sure that when the students get to school on the very first day, that they can come to a school that is clean, no trash, no litter, but then also just making sure even the smallest details are addressed. So we're out here spray painting the different rails on the, on the school, just making sure that once they show up, that everything is pristine and ready. So I just got to give, you know, big kudos to the Neighborhood Association President, all the officers, all the residents that are here this morning, just making sure that their school, their community school is taken care of.
I'm excited about this school year because we've made a lot of progress academically, and I'm excited to see what else we will do.
We're at Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. We are co-sponsored by Dan Crane, injury law, and so we are very excited to be able to give back to the community. We know that the past two years have been very difficult for our families, so we wanted to do just our part to help support them as our children go back to school. We are wishing them in G seven a safe, productive, and blessed school year.
We hope you all have a wonderful school year. And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Thank you. We really want to thank P I O. They've been following us around for the past month or so, trying to get the message out and to get our families ready. And thank you, councilors, and thank you, administration as well, for the support that you've given to our students and families. Thank you all so much. And we'll now start with our comments and our athlete down here on the end, Councilor Wood. Would you start us off?
Good morning. A couple of things. Killo Springs Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at Smith Middle School. The Northeast YMCA Monthly Grocery Box Giveaway is today at ten AM, so that is happening right now. Also, the Governmental Affairs Committee will meet on Wednesday, August tenth, here in the council chambers. I want to say that is two-thirty PM. One of the things we are going to talk about is, I think I mentioned the automated traffic enforcement piece, I think. Seeing a lot of things in the news that, you know, honestly, we have a lot of, you know, we think Center Point Parkway, I know everybody has streets in their district that are kind of speedways, but, you know, you see people running red lights at the last minute, you see people just speeding, you know, past schools and things like that. And so getting more tools in the toolbox to give us the opportunity to provide 24/7 enforcement, to identify who is, you know, committing these traffic violations that often lead to tragedy. And so, you know, even in just this year, I can think of at least two, maybe three occasions where somebody speeding on the parkway hit, you know, a power pole, a light pole, and you got traffic lights down, and you scrambling to get that up. And so that's cost to the public sector having to fix those things. So I'm kind of going to start talking about that, kind of lay out, you know, what that would look like potentially in a city like Birmingham, and just start having that conversation. So that'll be on Wednesday. And, yeah, I just want to really shout out all the kids going back to school, parents, really encouraging all parents to read with their child twenty minutes a day, working with I see me. I think it's really important to kind of build that habit, especially for the first twenty days of school, so that's twenty-four-twenty, asking, like, parents spend twenty days, twenty minutes a day just reading to your child. I think you're going to see a major impact in doing that. And also, I want to shout out Fred Davenport. He's leaving, he's leaving at least NBC, the role he's in now, and so we're definitely going to miss him. He's been a fixture here in Birmingham, always live. He would be live in two places at once, like, I would see him. And I'm like, but you're live across town right now. And so he would be, he would be all over the place, so we definitely appreciate the work he did here, and definitely going to miss having Fred. We'll watch him live from wherever he goes.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate those comments. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. North Pratt Neighborhood will meet tonight at six-thirty, conference call, six oh five three one three four one zero zero. The access code is one two two six nine four five. Sandusky Neighborhood meeting will be tonight at six PM via conference call. The number is three one nine five two seven nine six four two. Oak Ridge Neighborhood will meet Thursday, June the ninth at four PM via conference call. The dialing information is nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. The access code is two two three four one eight. Hooper City Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, June the sixth at six PM in person at the Hooper City Rec Center located at thirty-nine oh-one Fourth Street West. You can also join the meeting via conference call by dialing nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. The access code is two two three four one eight. The next public safety meeting will be today, here in the council chamber. Then the next public safety meeting will be October the twenty-third at one PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, August the eighteenth by one PM. Also, the Central Pratt Neighborhood Community Fund Day will be August the twenty-seventh at the House Sanford Rick Center located at three twenty Avenue D, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one four, from ten AM to two PM. So, Madam President, I do want to kind of piggyback off what Council Wood said. First, I want to send my condolences to the young lady who lost her life on early Sunday morning to senseless gun violence. I want to thank the Birmingham Police for their swift action in making, you know, an arrest in the exhibition driving. I do want to challenge this city council to work very closely and very hard with the legislature to make sure that we put some measures in place, because once again, street racing, exhibition racing, as Councilwoman Williams said on his piece, will not be tolerated in the city of Birmingham. The city does not owe you anything. I'm against anybody saying that the city should find a legal pit for these people to be doing burnouts and pit maneuvers. So we definitely need to work hard to do that. And parents also, I seen, I was out this weekend, Phillips High School reunion, celebrated their reunion, and want to thank Mayor Woof for coming out gracing the Phillips High School alumni, William Barnes as well, who was a Phillips High School alumni grad, along with myself. And I just happened to go down to CityWalk on Saturday and saw so many unauthorized teenagers pass. I know they couldn't have been eighteen or nineteen or twenty years old. I saw young people with book bags and just hanging out. And that, you know, parents got to get accountable for your kids. You got to get accountable for your kids to know where your children are. You got to be accountable. This, this has to be a two, this has to be a collective of everybody. You know, it can't be on the city council, it can't be on the mayor. We have our own households we have to run, our own families we have to take care of. So I'm challenging parents and people that run households, get a grip on your children. Or you, we will continue to see what we see, gun violence, senseless gun violence, and most of you all are not ready, or your children will be heading to the Alabama Department of Corrections. And I can tell you, as being a mother of a formerly incarcerated son, you are not ready for that. You're not going to be ready for that, because once they enter into them gates, they become the, an award of the state of Alabama. Mama, it ain't no mama. That's the mama. So I want to challenge this counselor to work with the legislation, to get a law on the books, to get control of this exhibition driving. Because I'm not going to be afraid to go out, because somebody wants to spin a car and do burnouts. And I'm, you know, like, my life, I have been blocked in by people just on Third Avenue. Two weeks ago, two motorcycles came on the side of me in a car. And also, again, on Third Avenue, when I had to veer off the road, because somebody at eleven o'clock in the morning want to turn up and do some burnouts. No, exhibition driving would not be tolerated in the city of Birmingham. If you want to race, go to Lassiter Mountain and race. Go to Bama Track and race. Go to Steel and race, but not in the streets of Birmingham.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Robuck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday at New Beginning Church, their usual location, at seven PM. Thank you to my colleague, Councilwoman Tate, for the, for the comments about exhibition driving and street racing. You know, over the, now we can count three lives that have been lost in our metro area, two of which are in the city limits of Birmingham, directly correlated to street racing or exhibition driving, whatever you want to call it. It is unfortunate that so many of our young people find this as something that's an outlet to, or pastime, or whatever you want to hobby, whatever you want to call it. But it is illegal, it is dangerous, and the young people that have been involved with the three lives that have been lost, like my colleague said, will now be spending their lives in, in state prison. And so there are consequent. And so there are consequent consequences to it. It might seem harmless and it might, you might not think that it affects people around you, but it can directly impact your life, especially when someone accidentally loses their life and then you spend the rest of your life in state prison. So it is something that I think that all of the leadership of the city of Birmingham is on the same page of, that we will not tolerate it. And I am hopeful that this session, we can get some actual laws on the books that will allow the city of Birmingham, specifically BPD, to, and really all the other municipalities in our area where this is going on as well, to actually be able to have some teeth and enforce what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, congratulations to co-owners of Twice As Nice Water Ice. That's Reginald Davis and Corey Bishop. They held their grand opening and ribbon cutting last Friday. We were happy to have a new business offering a sweet treat in Five Points West. They specialize in Italian ice and it's directly across from the Crossplex. Congratulations to former Department of Public Works Director Ralph de Bartelabon on his retirement. His last role, in his last role, he served as Department of Public Works Director of the World Games. And most of my experience with him predates my time on the city council when I chaired the Revitalization Committee of Bush Hills. And his manner and level of care with members of the community was very personal, caring, and exceptional. And I just really will miss him and appreciated my time, my experience with him. I had a big fun day yesterday, morning, early morning yesterday with principals, faculty, staff, and community leaders from the neighborhoods, school board, the city council, and the mayor's office as we welcomed students at Wilkerson and Bush Hill Steam Academy back to school on the first day. It was a lot, lot of fun. And got to be in Wilkerson after, I don't want to say how many years, but I did go to first grade, fourth and fifth grade there. And when, in the area where they received us, I saw my fourth grade teacher's, you know, Memorial to her on the wall, and it was, boy, it was like flashback. So that was really cool. Neighborhood meetings, we have Bellevue Heights Neighborhood meeting today at 6:30 in person at the Charles Brown Elementary School Gym. And there's plenty of space in the gym for social distancing. And if you need a virtual option for that meeting, you can call the District Eight Office at 254-2304 to get that call-in information. We're calling on all residents of Bush Hills, Fairview, Central Park, Ensley Highlands, Bellevue Heights, and Green Acres to come out and represent your neighborhood this Saturday when the Five Points West community has its long-awaited Fun Day Block Party. It's going to be this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 at the Crossplex. And you can expect rides, food, fellowship, and the musical talents of DJ Chris Coleman and Logan the Entertainer. So come out for family-friendly fun, meet your neighborhood leaders, and learn about community organizations that want to serve you. We look forward to seeing you there. Okay, and a couple of arts and culture announcements. Create Birmingham is partnering with Create Hubs and an amazing panel of expert judges, and they're launching a comic strip competition. This will be open to all residents and/or students of Jefferson County ages eight and above. So they will, they will accept monthly submissions on the first Friday of every month with winners announced and published the third week of every month. And you'll be competing for cash prizes that range from $25 to $100 based on your age bracket. There is a 17 and older bracket if y'all want to get involved. So you can visit www.createbirmingham.org for more information on that. Later this month, the 24th Sidewalk Film Festival returns to downtown Birmingham Theater District. The festival will take place the week of August 22nd through 28th, and there will be over 250 films screened throughout the weekend, including shorts, documentaries, and narrative features. And we'll also get a chance to go in our beloved newly renovated Carver Theater. Been waiting on that one to come back as a venue. And, you know, I got to really check with Carmen on this, but it says here, "You can discover great new films and revisit some favorites like Baby's Kids." So I got to double-check that. But anyway, get your tickets at wwwsidewalkfest.com. And don't forget the fourth annual, I'm sorry, the 19th Annual Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival, taking place August 27th. That's in the historic Fourth Avenue Business District. And this is a free event that features both local and national artists. So grab your lawn chairs and come on down. And finally, the Birmingham Parks and Recreation is hosting the city's Safe Havens Initiative, and this is several parks across town. It's starting August 15th, it goes to mid-October. And every Thursday is movie night, but you can find out what's going on in your area because there are several parks across town. I'm not going to read them all, but it starts August 11th, goes through August 13th, and it's from 6:00 PM until you can get homework out and other family activities. And, you're texting me. But anyway, please find out more about the Parks After Dark, family movie nights, and other activities going on in rec centers in your area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. Councillor Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. So, wanted to just remind everybody that the next Woodlawn Street Market will take place this Saturday, August the 13th. And it is, again, a night market through the hours of 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Street closures will begin at 12:00 PM that day. So if you're interested in coming, please, we encourage you to come out. At that street market, there will also be an opportunity to meet the Woodlawn High School football coaching staff as well as the players. They will be having a meet and greet for the community to just come out and meet the players and the coaching staff. There's also a new grand opening of the Thrive Wellness Lounge that will take place that day at 4:00 PM. And so use that opportunity to meet the owner, Ms. Tish Fletcher, at that event as well. So I have video announcements that will play. One of the announcements that I made was that the Kingston Community Day would take place this weekend as well. However, that has been canceled. Our condolences and prayers go out to our Neighborhood Association President in Kingston. Her mother actually passed away, and so we want to make sure that, you know, we lift her up in prayer. And so that Kingston Day has been canceled, just to make sure everybody knows. And lastly, I just want to, you know, give a shout out to the Engle Nook President, Reverend Gwendolyn Webb, for joining us today, as well as our Brunswick Heights Neighborhood Association President, Mr. Harry Giddens. And so I just wanted to say hello to you all. And those will conclude my announcements.
Thank you, Councillor Moore. Councillor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting will be tomorrow, August 10th, 2022, at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Neighborhood Association updates for tonight. East Avondale Neighborhood meets at 6:00 via conference call, and the Highland Park Neighborhood is meeting at the same time, 6:00 via Google Meet, which I haven't ever tried before, so it should be interesting. I'm encouraging all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for information regarding things going on in Birmingham. There is a lot going on, and that site is www.bhamdistrictthree.com. I wanted to thank Public Works because I reported on yesterday an intersection where two of the three stop signs were completely blocked by vegetation, and people were running the stop signs because they didn't even know they were there. It was written on the pavement still, but, you know, they couldn't see the signs. And that was handled, when I came to council meeting this morning, the vegetation had been removed. So I want to thank Public Works for being really quick on that because, obviously, when you have people running stop signs, it's dangerous. And I wanted to also just comment briefly on the street racing. I live maybe four or five blocks off of I-65, and I hear those people roaring up and down the interstate at 3:00 in the morning when I'm still awake, and it is amazing. And I would love to know who is in charge of, like, does anybody patrol the interstates? Or is that all, is that all on state troopers? Because I never see a state trooper in Birmingham on the interstates, but these people are out there, and you can tell they're flying because they have those things on their cars that make them sound like they're, you know, like really powerful cars, and I guess they must be. But you can hear them roaring, and they're roaring like from Homewood to downtown Birmingham, and they do it really, really fast. So you can tell that they are exceeding the speed limit, and it would just, if I was out there with them, I would be frightened because my little car just couldn't take a hit from something like that. So it is dangerous. And, you know, the wheelies and all those donuts that they do and everything, they're leaving all of their tar tread on our streets. So you can tell where they do it, but it doesn't seem that there's anybody there to catch them when they're in the act. But lots of residents will take videos and send them to you so that you can, can see. And I'm wondering, and I guess this would be a question for the Office of the City Attorney, if people send those videos and it clearly shows the tag numbers, can the police do anything, or is it, once again, where they have to be present to win?
Yes, Councillor Abbott, it's as you stated. It's as, it's as you stated, and also they would have to investigate any witnesses and things of that nature.
Okay, so the videos won't do any good. Well, that makes me sad. And speaking of sad, I want to offer my sympathies to the family, well, to my own family. My uncle was lost last week to COVID. So he's the last of my father's siblings. He died of COVID. And my mother's entire family is gone now. She lost her younger sister to COVID. So all the people who think COVID is no big deal, I got news for you. It's a big deal. Now, maybe it's only a big deal if you're older, but since I'm older, I think about that a lot. You know, you start thinking about it when you are, when you fit in the category. So, so that was really sad, but, but it's life. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. We do extend sympathy to you. Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by offering one parent's perspective regarding the statistic that Mayor Woodfin stated this morning about 71% attendance rate in Birmingham's good at city schools yesterday. Again, this is one parent's perspective. I'm not sure why my child was at school yesterday. I don't think my child experienced any instruction or learning. That was the same experience that we had at the beginning of school last year. So, you know, that 29% that didn't show up yesterday, perhaps, you know, there's, they've had some experience that informs whether or not they show up that first week. So just wanted to offer that alternative viewpoint and, you know, some explanation as to why we might be seeing that type of participation. So it is what it is. Just wanted to offer that perspective. East Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet tonight, 6:00 PM via conference call. Please call our office at 205-254-2679 for additional information. Smithfield Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, August 11th, at 6:00 PM at Smithfield Courts Community Center. That is located at 805 First Street North. Again, that's Thursday, August 11th at 6:00 PM. And just a reminder about some upcoming events in this, this month in the Civil Rights District. August 9th, August 19th, sorry, Fourth Avenue Market will be taking place from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the Waits parking lot. On the following day, August 20th, there is a volunteer event where you can assist with refreshing the street murals. And Urban Impact is the organization that's leading that, and they will have more information if you're interested in volunteering for that. And then, as Councillor Clark mentioned, the 19th Annual Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival is taking place on the 27th. So while you're down at Sidewalk seeing some films, you can wander over to Fourth Avenue, check out the Carver Theater, and, and catch some very awesome music being performed live for free. So, and that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. Councillor Abbott, I'm sorry for your loss. I would like to offer a resolution of sympathy for you and your family.
Second?
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So move.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. You're welcome. The next District Six pop-up farmer's market will be this Saturday, August 13th, from 1:30 to 3:30. We will be at Memorial Park. South Tinsville will have a neighborhood meeting today, August 9th, via teleconference beginning at 5:30 PM. The call-in number is 602-580-9484, and the access code is 684-6610. The Arlington West End Neighborhood Association will meet today in person at 6:00 PM at the West End Public Library. There will be a Magic City Pop-Up Plaza food and retail vendors at Railroad Park this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. The next special call, well, the next Budget and Finance meeting will meet Monday, August 22nd, at 3:30 here in the chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, August 17th by noon. Also, we still have an opening for the Director Position Three for the Land Bank Board, so all interested applicants can email me at crystal smitherman@birminghamal.gov. All resumes should be received by 5:00 on Tuesday, August 16th. For more information on the exciting events happening in District Six, visit our website at www.d6bham.com. Also, with the street racing, I'm very saddened that we have a lot of losses due to this. And, you know, I think it is a good idea, and I know Councillor Williams, I have a lot of faith in him, that he will make sure that's at the top of our priority list that we usually send in at the beginning of each year. But the problem right now is they don't go back into session for another four or five months. So I think we have to also think about if there's any help that we can do locally or even ask the state for help as well. I know Councillor Tate talked about that. We do have to kind of make an example out of somebody so they don't think this is a joke. Because a lot of times, I think Mayor Woodfin talked about this, the way the law is, is really a slap on the wrist. And we need to send a message, not only for this, but illegal dumping, crime in general, that like, this is not okay, and we don't think this is okay. So I don't want the public to think that we're just like sitting back, we don't think this is okay. We're just trying to think of a good solution for making sure that we're effective because a lot of times, you can jump the gun and do something and put something out, and then it can make the fire even worse. So, Councillor Williams, I have a lot of faith in you. I know Councillor Williams has a lot of experience with this, and Councillor Tate, she's on it. So y'all better believe my girl when she said, believe her what she say, you know. So, thank you, Madam President, for announcements. Everybody stay safe with the monkeypox and COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. These are announcements for District Seven. We have- Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. These are announcements for District 7. We have Neighborhood Association meeting today. The Riley-Travallack Neighborhood will meet at Noble Chapel CME Church. That's at 3700 Maple Avenue Southwest. They'll meet at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, the Roosevelt City Neighborhood Association will meet. And we'll be meeting via conference call at 11:00 AM. I just want to remind everyone that we're kicking off our Safe Summer Series on Sunday, August 14th. It'll be good music. We'll be out at Birmingham Botanical Gardens. That's Sunday, August 14th at 6:00 PM. So come on out, bring your long chair, and let's enjoy it. I also just giving additional assistance to families as they go back to school. I want to remind everyone of the Affordable Connectivity Program. It's a federal government program that provides a $30 voucher to families where they can get a discount for broadband service. There is also an opportunity to get a one-time discount for $100 for a laptop, desktop computer, or a tablet that is purchased through a participating provider. Now, how can you be eligible for this? Go to affordableconnectivity.gov to submit an application or print out the application and mail it in. And typically, if you are on one of the following assistance programs, SNAP, Medicaid, Federal Public Housing Assistance, Veterans Pension, or Survivor Benefits, WIC, SSI, you typically will be eligible for this program. So again, go to www.a c p benefit.org. Do also want to reiterate and just say that the Green Acres Neighborhood, we'll be glad to join them at the Community Fund Day that's coming up at the Crossplex. So excited to be there with them. The Men of Powderly will be having a picnic at the Cooper Green Ballpark at 11:00 AM on Saturday. I do just want to offer my comments as well about the situation that has led to the death of at least three people here in our city and this senseless, senseless acts that are occurring. And I just want to paraphrase or take something that I saw posted on Facebook. And of course, this deadly incident, once again, it eliminates some of the arguments that we've been having or have been presented to us as a council. One of those is that we ain't out here killing people. Yes, you are. Two people are dead. We know what we're doing. No, you don't. It's not safe. The city of Birmingham should have a safe place for us. We have no obligation to promote reckless and senseless activity. So as we go through the next few weeks, the next few days, again, we want to find ways to put teeth into our current policies. But again, it is a state legislative act. And so as we go through and go through the next few weeks to try to get that support, we ask you to please just think about it before you go out and perform these type of acts. Not only what you're doing to the city, but how unsafe it is. I, when people come up beside me and they're racing, or as Council Tate indicated, getting blocked in, it's just, I can't believe anyone is standing out there like it's a thrill or it's something that's entertaining. It's unsafe. So let's just try to do our best as residents. What is the question they ask is that know where your children are, know what they're doing. And let's just work together as a city to really try to end this. At this time, we do have speakers that have signed up to speak. And Mr. Clerk, if you will read the list on the speaker's list. Thank you.
Reverend Whit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was hoping that the mayor would be here so I could thank him myself to Mrs. Sparks and my councilman and all of you. And to you, Madam President, I'd like to thank you for coming out to our church for the bookbag giveaway. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the mayor for something that my councilman will tell you. I drive my, my neighborhood, so I know what's going on. I thank him for having DPW to come out on yesterday to cut the route where the children walk to and from school. I'm a weeping prophetess. So that really brought tears to my eyes. And now, we missed some areas, though. So I'll turn those in, and I know that will be taken care of. But our community center, the grass, is so high until if the children want to play, they can't play. So therefore, I would be very appreciative. They started on Friday, but I don't know, maybe the equipment broke down or something. But I'm very appreciative for what all of you are doing in your different districts. Some of you, I call my children. So I think I did some pretty good raising. And there are others I'd like to take to class. But also, if we could, we have a, on the books, there is a curfew ordinance on the books. And that curfew ordinance, if we recall, I know Valerie probably recalls it. If your child, the ages are so stipulated. And if your child, you are the responsible party for your child, and you've got a child 16 and, and other ages out there, and you don't know where that child is, and incident occurs, and the child is arrested, now who else should be arrested with that child? It's an ordinance. All we've got to do is act on that. And it's even on the walls of the housing authority. Look, you see it. The only way we're going to combat these criminal elements is to deal with the criminals. That's the only way. And if I had a child underage, I should know where that child is. So therefore, we're here to assist in any way possible. My, my councilman will tell you that, that we ride together. And there are some other things. And I've presented some outline forms to my councilman and to Mrs. Sparks. And on that, we're not looking for a handout. We're just looking for a hand. And we could get those things that we have requested. We are talking about doing matching farms, Madam President. So those are the things that I want to say to you. Kudos. Kudos to the mayor. Kudos to you, Carol, for some things that you've been working on with us. But anyway, we don't want to be a hindrance. We just want to have a hand up. So if we could get those, if we could get those things and do matching funds, we're ready. I've even been talking to some men that's ready. If we can get equipment, now, Madam President, we're not going to be using our own lawn mowers. And weed eaters, oh, no, that's a no-no. But if we can get the equipment that, that we need, I've got some men ready to help us work. Again, to all of you, I say thank you. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, next speaker.
It should be Dr. Murphy.
He's stepped up.
All right. Is it Rico Harris?
Good morning.
Let's take a brief moment to introduce myself, my business, and our event that we have coming up. My name is Rico Harris, born in Birmingham, raised in Atlanta, came back after high school. I worked in the coal mine in Tuscaloosa about 10 years before I started my business, Outpush Magazine, which is a printed magazine here in Birmingham. It's a free publication. And we employ interns from different colleges and high schools with communication interests. And what we're doing is our fourth annual Outpush Food and Music Festival, 19th Street, Enslie. It's a 21-up event. And what we do is we work with several creatives and entrepreneurs throughout the year. And on this day, we collectively come together, the party with a purpose, and to patronize each other at this event. And I just want to introduce myself again. This is our fourth year doing this in Enslie. Some of you guys face a new, so it's important that I introduce myself. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. What time does that start?
It starts at 5:00 PM.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any flyers?
Yes, I have something I can leave. Yes.
Thank you. We'll get somebody to get that from you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatch. Oh, there's Mr. Murphy.
To the mayor's office and the council, I come in peace and love. Didn't come to challenge anybody. I came to do the Lord's work. The only reason I'm here is because God put this on my heart to tell you. And I would like for you to take another view. I understand we all come this way and get where we are today, through trials and tribulations. And sometimes, those trials and tribulations takes the best of us, that we start seeing the world out of dark eyes instead of the eyes that Jesus represented. Imagine a world without stop signs. How chaotic it would be. And imagine a world if a stop sign had red, green, and yellow on it. It would still be chaotic. The truth of the matter is that we see killings, we do. We have to understand NASCAR started out of bootlegging and moonshine. For us to actually get here today to see Chad and Sparks and all these beautiful people here today, man, I was telling them when I first met him, he's gonna be there if the truth be told. Young man, Chad, I told him the same thing, he gonna be there if the truth be told. The truth of the matter is there is a solution to these things in the lighter side of life. We understand that kids are killing each other. Yes, that's true. My research has shown, I mean, I got 25 years in this, the truth of the matter is our kids have an image that they must uphold in their culture. And an image without reality is blind. So now, we can't stop culture. Because in the culture of this place we are today, there were white people came on these benches at city council, as commissioners, after they got through hanging us on trees. Not here to attack anybody, just here to tell the truth, to look at another view. Since we know a part of our young people culture, to express themselves is in danger, in dangerous ways, and it causes people death. No different when I was a kid. We used to go up there on the tank in Bush Hill, ride down Dead Man Hill. Ain't number the Lord saved us. So you know what the neighbors used to do? They would come outside and stop the traffic till they got a hold of our parents. They just didn't let us die. So since we know that this situation is a situation, what we, look at this for a minute. Won't we try to build a place for them? Why are we going through the situation? Because y'all jobs are hard. And I know you attacked every day. And no matter what I say, there are some people gonna hate me up here, gonna make me look as a bad in their heart. All the love in my heart, they're not gonna see that. All the Jesus that I'm trying to represent, they're not gonna see that. People gonna say I tried to get the council straight. I'm not trying to get it straight. I love everybody up here. My life shows this. So in the meanwhile, what we must do, like we did when Barbara Motorsports came, we built them a track. So let's look at trying to get these young kids while we're working with them in their young age. Because you have to understand, if never in the history of the United States that you have as many young black millionaires ever in history. You got black folks 18 years old, worth $20 million. What would we be if we had that kind of money?
Thank you. Just give me a few more minutes.
Okay.
We do have another speaker.
I know.
Thank you.
Just imagine where would we be at that age? So our job is to try to get them to the age of responsibility. Because a lot of these kids come here, they come out of love. They came out of sex, he fine, she fine, or I'm drunk that night, or I'm high. Ain't never seen no love. So this is a part of their reality. It's a part of their makeup. So the reason that that guy shot that girl like it is, because that car was a part of him. In his mind, he tore his life up. That's what he was thinking. He can't see the difference between day and night, night and day. It's because of his mindset. And all I'm asking, if you can open up your ears and heart and look at this thing for real while y'all work hard and diligently. Because jail and punishment is not the only answer. Let's see, can we find a place that the city owns and put them out there and charge and get the police out there, take the guns off them, and let them have their way?
And thank you, Dr. Murphy. We do appreciate that, miss.
May God bless you. May God keep you.
Thank you. I think we have one more speaker.
Mr. Hatch.
Yes.
Good morning to the mayor's office, to the council as well. Y'all pray long with Brother Sead. I kind of been on the weather with a little acid reflux problems. The first one, I said congratulations on the prosperity I've been seeing lately. You know what I mean, the World Games, somebody said we're in a little debt. Everybody still enjoyed theirsself. Birmingham Stages been winning all their football games. Goth Brooks came and filled the house with 60,000 people. So like, things are going good. Before all that, I even heard we got a overflow in the budget and all that council stuff. So it seem like we doing good, y'all, you know, far as financially, from what I'm seeing in the reports. And so it bring me to my subject, it's time to start sharing if we really can. You know what I'm saying? All I'm trying to say, y'all, we done did so much for downtown. It's about time to go cross town now, y'all. It's time to go cross town now. I saw some senior citizens on the other day. It brought tears to my eyes. They were complaining about their lives. Said they been to the city hall, they talked to the council. I ain't gonna call your name. And said they didn't get no response. They've been trying to get in touch with somebody, can't get in touch with nobody. That's sad in my heart, y'all, when I see that kind of stuff. Because I got a compassionate side of me. That just saddened me because I don't see people in Five Points South, too much coming down complaining. Because their trash is picked up daily. You know what I mean? And so all I'm saying, we got all this money and doing good, y'all. We been partying and having a good time. But now it's time to feel somebody's pain. That's pain what happened to that young lady, y'all. That's pain what happened to them two, three other folks. That's pain what happened to the last 12 to 14 people in Birmingham. Been murdered, homicide. And now, we at a point now where we think the police in it, turn from that and go find somebody burning rubber. The RAC said they ain't got enough police to handle a homicide. They said they under police, they ain't getting paid enough. And we know there was a low morale with the police department and the mayor's office. It don't take a blind man to see that. Something going on with that spirit. I was looking at when they made that guy cheap the other day. I was looking at how empty that room was. That room wasn't full like it should have been. Know that room wasn't full. So let me know right then. Something going on with that, Brother Sead. There's a low morale going on with that. Now, and my third thing, let's get to Montgomery. Because I heard y'all say, we gonna go to Montgomery, they gonna help us out with this thing, with this racing and burning rubber. Okay, I really want to see that happen. Because last time I saw Montgomery talk to y'all, they were telling y'all how much y'all gonna pay for taking that statue down. That's the last time I heard Montgomery talking to Birmingham, to the city of Birmingham. If Montgomery was gonna help y'all with racing cars, why Montgomery went on the world stage with y'all at the World Games? Why them top officials didn't come to the World Games and join y'all? If they gonna help y'all with burning rubber and racing cars, the only time Montgomery speak- speaks up is when you got a bingo place. I be up there to bust them bingo places. I'mma usurp my authority, owe the man the shell, and I'mma come up there and bust the bingo places. Or if an officer end up shooting somebody, he comes out and speaks about that. That was justified. He speaks about that. But do y'all really think Montgomery, the top officials, finna come get along with Birmingham? Y'all remember the Melma Way thing we tried to go up on? We stood right outside, I dealt with them signs. They, what they said, "Ain't gonna be no Melma Way to go up in Birmingham." Y'all can forget about that. So I'm praying for y'all about Montgomery gonna join in, they gonna sing kumbaya with us, and we gonna get along, and they gonna help the city of Birmingham. I'm waiting on that and I'm praying for that, y'all. And I have nothing against nobody down here sitting in one of them, including Randall. And many of them have some personal stuff, but I forgave Randall. I love brother Randall, proud of brother Randall to be a young black man, doing some great things, but he can do a lot better, y'all, for the least of them. You know what I mean? A bookbag and stuff, that's okay. A bag or canned goods, that's okay. A free gas card, that's okay. But we ain't finna go down there by UAB and get them no bookbag and no canned goods and no free gas card. We finna get them some property, some land, some incentives worth millions of dollars. But when it come to our poor folks, we gonna give you some canned goods, a free gas card, we gonna give you a party with a purpose. And say we had a good time. Hey, God bless y'all. I'm through with that.
Thank you. Is that in our speakers' list?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. At this time, council committee entertaining motion for adjournment. Oh, I do want to thank our officers on duty, Cedric Pinkert, Micah Blair, and Jason Hicks. We're entertaining motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you. Your turn.
Hello, this is Councilman JT Moore, and I am here with your D4 weekly announcements. So on Saturday, August 13th, the Kingston community will be having their community day from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Stockton Park. So I want all of my Kingston residents, if you are in the area, please make sure that you come out. It's gonna be a great time to connect with your neighbors, as well as get some good food, good information, and just have an all-around good time. Also, Hudson Cake 2A School will be having their Verizon Innovative Learning Lab ribbon cutting ceremony on August 17th at 1:00 PM. This will provide more technological access to our students, and we are so excited to provide more resources for our scholars. Congratulations to the Hudson School and their principal and the rest of the faculty. So of course, you know, tonight, we have some Neighborhood Association meetings. So to all of my residents in the Kilo Springs, Northeast Lake, and Penfield Park neighborhoods, please make sure that you go to the city council website, scroll down to the District 4 page, find your neighborhood, and you will find all the details concerning phone numbers, Zoom links, any of those things to be able to attend our Neighborhood Association meeting. We hope to see you there. Also, I just want to say thank you to each and every person that came out for the cleanup days. This past weekend, we had us a cleanup day out there in Fairmont, in the Fairmont neighborhood, as well as in Norwood, and it was a great experience. We had a lot of residents to come out, have a good time, and just so thankful for everybody taking responsibility and saying, "Hey, this is our neighborhood. We're gonna keep it clean, and we're gonna do our part to make it look beautiful." So thank you to all of you. So I also have to send a big shout out to the Mount Olive Baptist Church congregation. I was asked to attend their back-to-school fair rally. They had an opportunity, or gave me the opportunity, to be able to speak to young people about, giving them different advice about what to expect for this school year, how to make right decisions, as well as to make sure that they had the correct school supplies to be prepared for this school year. So I just want to say thank you to them and the work that they're doing in the community over in the Kingston neighborhood, and I look forward to being a part of more events like that. So thank you. So I know that I'm a day late, but I hope everybody had a great start to their school year. I know all of our students had an opportunity to go back to school on yesterday, and so just want to give a big shout out to all of the students in the Birmingham city school system. I just want you to know from myself and the rest of the council, we are extremely excited about each and every one of you, and we're praying that you all have a wonderful, safe school year. Those are the end of the weekly announcements for D4. I pray that everybody have a wonderful week.